Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay. We have a lot on the agenda, but the first item of business that we can have before we start, just to let you know, we are live. We are requesting that anybody from the audience who's speaking, there's a post-it over here. You can go to the post-it. People on the line who are watching typically having a problem identifying who is speaking. Before you speak, throw out your name and your address here in town, just so that people can hear it live. It also helps Keisha out.
Even if everybody knows you. It's people watching though, necessarily.
So, first item on the agenda is Wayne Young is here. Wayne has been selected by the board to be our incoming chief of police. We just wanted to give, we were talking with Wayne earlier, but we want to give him an opportunity just to introduce himself, take a few questions.
Stand up those pieces of tape.
I'm sure we'll get something a little more of us at a later point in time, but since he's here. Hey, how you doing, everyone?
As Scott Conson said, my name is Wayne Young. I'm a resident of Strad, I'm currently sergeant of the Greenland Police Department. A position I've held for 22 years. I've been in law enforcement for 27 years, 24 full-time. I'm very involved in the community of Greenland. I've been at DRO, served in school for 14 years until I was promoted as a sergeant in 2014. Involved with a lot of community programs, National Net Out, Heroes Columbus, which we help needy families around Christmas time. We take a shot at our target area of Greenland. And I also put car seats in for new parents and stuff like that. Very community oriented. I'm married, my wife and I, and my two children, 16-year-old sons, junior at Exeter High School, and a 14-year-old daughter who is a freshman at Exeter High School. So, very involved in the community, as well as the school. And I coach American Asian baseball in Exeter, Exeter Force 32. So, I'm also on the budget committee in Strad, a position that I had for one year. Learned a lot last year, but I'm very involved with the community. Looking forward to meeting the residents of Newfields and the business owners and working with the board as well. I have a couple more groups to jump through in the next couple of weeks. We're anticipating hopefully around Thanksgiving to start my employment. Any questions at all?
Well, it's an easy crowd at any time.
Yeah. I hope it stays this season. Probably getting me no call at all.
And every community has me.
I'm welcome.
Thank you. Looking forward to being on town again, knowing you. Thank you very much. Wayne, thank you. Are you welcome to stay? Otherwise, go home to your wife.
I'm gonna go home down in soon.
Oh, great. Thank you. By the way, Wayne, just FYI, we got the health trust stuff today.
Help yourself.
So, we're gonna be holding off on that too.
Perfect.
You'll get back to it. Great. All right. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Next up, look at that. We are right back on schedule. Library, budget. You are up, Mr. Freeing. Stand up. Identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Winfree, board trustee's library for the library. Here with Jack Barnum, Brendan Johnson, also board trustee of the library. So, you guys all have copies of the budget. There's first page kind of shows some of the history, going back to 15 for reference. Back page, that two pages, then you see comparable libraries, how we, summary, and circulation lending and borrowing stats for a library that Carl, our director, put together. Just some of the highlights here. On the first page, again, you'll see what we had for 2020 budget. Basically, we're talking about salary, the line items, people don't know. Holiday is zero, but there's part-time salary, which is a stat. Social Security, medical, which obviously is capitation of the salary. Telephone and internet, which is shared with town hall. I'm not sure who else I know is with town hall. Repairs and maintenance, covers a lot of various things, such as structural stuff to the asset itself of the town, which would be painting the building, roofing side, nothing that goes really inside the building. It's just maintenance on the building itself, like the furnace, oil, something like that. There's library cleaning, which you'll notice we stepped up during COVID. Then there's groundskeeping, which again is a portion of what's shared with the town. That's done by Laurie Martin. And then there's the town purchase of books and periodicals, which we get matched at about three grand. This gets matched by the friends typically when they ask. So, that's basically the lineups we have with people who don't know. What we're coming here today, asking for a 2% increase. There was no increase prior year during COVID. We said that probably wasn't worth it to everybody. We talked to the staff, agreed, understood. But this year we'll look for 2%. If you're looking at some of the pages on the side, everybody wants it, and we have extras. You know, that's for Carl, our director, Cory Caputo, Brittany Thompson. Then we have an alternate, a woman that will come in periodically, if somebody like Carl is out to be asked. Don't need her typically, we just put it in there for some hours throughout the year in case Carl or somebody, director, like, was sick or can't make it. And she usually volunteers to come in anyway. So, nice woman, good place. We did put a little bit of an increase on internet and telephone. Everything's kind of going up, $1,000 to discuss. We did maintain the weekly cleaning. It's been good for us, people have noticed. It's not out of COVID or our patients who appreciate that, so I can carry and keep that. And then the $1,000 right in there, really a portion of that is the town, but that's for maintaining our front steps that go in and out of these falling off on certain paces and we gotta fix that.
Do you have a quote for that, or is that just a?
I do. It's old and I've gotta get it re-done.
That's fine.
I think it was just around there.
Yeah, it was.
Because it's really just pointing it up.
Yes.
The stones, I just gotta point it up.
Hours, months, are you guys good? I mean, you're holding to the 57, which I think is great. Is there, is there a demand for more hours?
Now, if you look on the agenda, you'll see some of the patronage, which is nice, so you can look through what was lent, what was borrowed, right? Because it's always been our goal, hey, you know, build it and come, so, but we have inflow, and Carl's been good at helping us maintain that. You know, when he first started, beginning of 2019, you know, Brittany, Cory, and Carl were all new, really ramped up. Saw a lot of agents, a lot of good projects came out of it. They've been busy trying to maintain crafts and things throughout, but obviously COVID kind of put a dampening on that. You can see things were borrowed, which is great.
Yep.
And Cory and Brittany have done amazing job just pushing a lot of the crafts and things out. So, may not be people coming in, but people participating. And we were able to maintain open hours for people, you know, for a library our size. Interesting to look at how COVID affected different libraries. And Carl was pretty bullish on this, looking at the numbers, running as an expert in the field, obviously. So, we had in-house expertise on how to handle things. And, you know, it's like, I feel comfortable, we answer that, but that helped us maintain our hours. Circulation, which is great. So, yeah, we're able to maintain that. And we're only open 35, but the 57 is, there's tons of hours that a director or Cory or people are dealing with, do the program at. If you know what we left, we were there for the patrons, it's pretty big, okay?
Any questions?
No questions.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right, next one up. They're loading. That's good.
Trying to finish that load in. Pretty much stayed the last year. Only thing we did go up on is road salt. Road salt went up 40% this year. From 47, $48 a ton to $67 a ton. I believe that's because of shipping, so. It did go up $6,000 total.
And road salt went up?
Yeah, for the, yeah, just on the road salt. Yeah. It's not, if I went up to 40%, we would have gone 9, but.
Asphalt pricing also seeing any increases?
It will.
I mean, I expected.
We have it, yeah, we have it, yeah, but it's, it's gonna go up.
Is that built into here, or are you assuming just?
I was assuming it's stay. I was actually.
Or 150 for the paving?
Yeah, for the 150 for next year.
And so?
I was hoping, I didn't know what was going on with that money. Two guys were young.
COVID money?
Yeah, with that $170,000, if we would get any of that next year.
Well, you provided, correct me if I'm wrong, but you provided something over the?
50-something thousand.
Yeah, for, for a bunch of?
1000 street going for drainage.
Drainage stuff, yeah.
Yeah, manholes and.
So, will we consider that as part of all of this?
Yeah.
So, outside of the operating, I don't want to necessarily include the operating.
Right, right, I didn't want to include that.
Yeah, no, you're correct about that.
But that was. One thing I wanted to do next year, and I was hoping, you know, we would hopefully get some of that to do some of that.
I think right now, I would anticipate that we're gonna be able to do.
Pleasant Street was what we wanted to focus on some of next year as well.
So, the paving is pleasant till summer?
Yeah, that's, summer speaks the fuck up down the hill, but also we're coming down.
Would you do all of pleasant up to summer?
That's what I was hoping to do next year. If not, we would do pleasant to swamp stuff.
Yeah.
That's the worst section.
Summer to swamp, from summer to swamp.
And that needs to be reclaimed. This section, we don't, we could probably go over. That's where the drainage is down there, and we wanted to.
And then Evergreen Court?
Evergreen Court, we talked about taking the circle out.
Yes. And that's that part of it, right? Taking the circle out?
So, you, and when you take the circle out, and what?
No, right now, it's like, it's huge, like a big helicopter pad.
Yeah, yeah.
Hundred and something. And then, so we wanted to just have a pavement.
Put something in the middle 24-foot road, because the paving, the whole thing's ridiculous.
Yeah.
No, not, but if it's something in the middle, you talked about?
The snow storage.
Snow storage.
Yeah.
So, you have someplace to put it?
We have a lot of snow and stuff, so, we talked about that. And then Bald Hill Road, is it the glue in the truck?
Through the T?
The triangle, put it to a T.
Okay, so that's, that's gonna be?
The intersection, which we have a permit, so, yeah, called set.
It's all done now? Took a while, didn't it?
Not too, too bad. Not as bad as some states, those things.
Okay. Anything else here? I mean, I've raised this all chat, and we've talked about in the past, what you, you're upcoming to do that.
So, I was looking at your proposal for the gopher funds.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure about this paving part. I was reading the regulations about it before this. I believe we can pave, we can use gopher funds to pave where you do the upgrades.
Yeah, that's what.
So, I wasn't sure going all the way to swamp stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
But we can.
But a lot, some of that is pavement patching from the drainage and digging up the road.
Right, so you've got, you've got that pavement patch here, so I, it's on here. So, I, just so you know, we go back and look at this, that I don't know that this part is covered.
The paved.
But this part, I believe should be.
Okay.
Because it's all about stormwater.
Correct.
Management, right, yeah.
Well, a lot of that also will be, if we're reclaiming Summer Street, can we put that in the gopher and then utilize the operational funds for the other?
I don't know. What do you mean reclaiming Summer?
We, well, we're talking about reclaiming, basically a road that is failing. And, and that may actually come under the infrastructure allocation and allowances, so that, again, we'll have to go back and look. But if that's the case, then we can move stuff around to, to make it work. Okay, other questions? That's it?
No.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. All right. Chief, you ready?
No, sorry.
All right.
You can see, no increase. We're gonna shuffle around in different areas again. We're gonna have a internet upgrade this year. Most of our paging service is now going through the internet in our current, we just needed an upgrade from Comcast. I just moved some monies out of the part-time salaries to, for the increasing in the Comcast bill. Other than that, everything's level from last year. Still like to put this two same warrant articles in. That, that total for the warrant articles is not accurate. I don't get reports, that's something I don't.
They got the 321-13, yeah.
I don't get reports like we used to with this new regime. We get, we don't get, I used to get reports.
On the trust funds?
Yes. We used to get reports all the time, and we don't see any.
Good to know.
So, that's just your estimation, best estimation?
Oh, it's a lot, it should be, it should be 50-plus thousand. I have that on the top line.
Yeah, might be, that's, that's the year before. Okay.
I think, you know, I'd like to be able to get those reports. You know, I'm sure the other, other areas would like to get reports too, to see how much we have.
For the trust month?
I think what you're trying to ask is the number from the town report from last year?
The trustees giving to you?
The current number?
I think the C1's probably in.
I got 40?
The last one, 40 years. Uh, used to, used to email the dollar, and she would just push it in.
From the trustees, from the trustees of all the trusts we've got, okay.
Okay. Wayne, you're pleased with this bench? How's the new apartment, by the way?
Excuse me, Travis?
Oh, the new apartment?
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, no problems?
Nope.
That's great.
Very excellent.
Great.
And can I ask what the cost of a fire, replacement fire truck is going to be now?
They average it right now for an engine about $640,000.
$640, okay. And when you say eight years or six to blank years, is this like?
Well, our original, our original plans was like every six to seven years, we would replace one of the trucks. And that way, we didn't have like one 35 years old. That has changed since then, obviously. But, you know, we're in a different situation now, when, when no one is near staff as much as we used to be. So, our next person, I can't tell you when it's gonna be, it'll be in the next couple of years. We'll probably drop down the truck and trade two to get, get rid of two to get one.
Two older ones?
Yeah. And I think it'll be fine for the department. You know, we've got, we definitely have personnel shortages. It's, it's happening everywhere. It's getting very, very desperate everywhere. That's something I want to talk to you about too. I have a couple handouts there. I don't, volunteerism is gone, and it's probably, probably gone more in this town than it is in the other town. But we have not gained a new member, active member, in probably four, four years. If you look at me, you look at some of our other members, we're getting very old. I've got 43 years of department.
Are you young yet hard, Jeff?
Uh, not even a lot. I used to be. So, there's, I've been, I've been talking to other departments now. A lot of this stuff doesn't gain work, doesn't reach you people, but there are some different ways out there of compensating people.
Are these carrots that you dangle to try to get people in?
It's not only that, it's trying to keep you out of leaving work. People aren't taking vacation times. It's just, things have changed, and we don't see them, we don't see them getting any better. So, I think it's time to seriously talk about one of these options. These are just kind of jotted down with some quick figures, based on about five days of response times. Obviously, I think full-time personnel is out, because I don't know what they do in the town of Newfields. I think I sit there and wait for a fire call. But, you know, on-call seems to be working for some areas of the boundaries. We should have a couple people that'll, that'll sign up for on-call if any, some during the day. You can't fill every shift, probably not. Newmarket, which we work very closely with, they do a paper call and an on-call shift. So, how that works is one of the fire, we have a couple of firemen will sign up for a shift from 6:00 to 6:00, 6:00 in the morning, 6:00 at night, meaning we're gonna be in town. And they're gonna go to the calls, but you pay minimum wage for them 12 hours, depending on whether it's a day shift or a night shift, which you know you get coverage. You don't, you wouldn't go out and sign up 10 people a night for that, you know, you have the minimum. And, you know, sometimes it just might help to pay the guys to come to a call. I mean, I think, you know, I'm talking with some of the area, area departments that do it, but we're the only ones left that don't get a stipend for.
And there's, there's still straight volunteer?
Yeah.
Wow, so, straight volunteer?
Straight volunteer. And I'm not saying that's gonna make a difference, I'm just trying.
No, no, no. I mean, clearly it's an issue.
Yeah.
And, and clearly the town needs to start thinking about this now, because it is likely to be, if we don't address this now, a day of reckoning where, you know, half the force is like, yeah, we're done.
Well, it's kind of.
Yeah, exactly.
If we've got people out of the boundaries, we got 57 years. Huh? 60? Well, I'm talking about Tommy Carr. We got 57, 60. I've got multiple guys that have been here 44, 45 years.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna do all, you know, every night. Go out to a final declaration of house, because somebody can change the address, you know.
What do you, what do you think would be the best?
Do I? I think the combination of the paint, of the paper call and the on-duty call would be the best.
So, and it says?
And I, and I think you're gonna see that's gonna be the most reasonable for the town. The stipends, in talking with all the chiefs around the problem, the stipend is key to track. I'm not gonna give a guy a stipend that shows up for one call a year. You know, so, you know, and most of we use a 60% rule. You make 60%, you can't expect more than that. I mean, it's, it's still, it's not their job. But that's tough to keep track. So, again, this is direct cost, there are other costs, there's administrative costs to all this, which is. So, you know, it's, it's, it's something that we're gonna have to look into. You know, as they say, we haven't had any new members. We've had some inquiries, but when they find out what they have to do, they don't.
Yeah.
You know, we get some college kids in the summers, we're in pretty good shape there today. But one school's back in session.
They're gone.
They're gone.
How many people do you think you need? How many do you have right now?
Well, I mean, there's still 24 on the roster, but then you could really say active-wise right now, eight.
And how many do you think you would want to, want or need?
I would like to have at least 20 people active on the roster. And then, that wouldn't be 20 people who are signed up to, to, you know, every night to go on call and stuff like that. We didn't try to control that, but, you know, you need 20, you need 20 people. We, we, for years, we were at 30, 30-plus. We probably had 15 to 20 that always responded.
Would a per-call pay and non-call-in-town program get you to where you need to go?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I still get the people to do it.
Right. I understood.
You know, you know, everything's, everything else is going up. You know, your, your, your fire certification is more hours than it was before. So, you get something, you get some interest in that. And you can tell them, you know, you gotta go through 240 hours of training to become certified, you know, to do anything, which I think, you know, I think is wrong. I think the state should have never gone that way, because there's jobs for everybody, you know, there's jobs that somebody means not, never want to go into a fire, but can run a truck or do something else. And then on the medical side, you know, that's a minimum of 180 hours and, you know, another 12 or 14 hours continuing education every month.
Do you have any thoughts about the department in like five years? Like, do you, what do you see happening and how urgent is?
Probably with chief. Stop, I'll be serious. I mean, it's a long time, you know, but.
I expect that.
You know, I would expect, I would expect that it's going like it's been in the last 10 years and five years of time. It's gonna be to have to contract with another department, which is.
For coverage.
For coverage, or hire full-time. And the full-time help is, is even harder, if it's not easy, you know, it's.
But, but it's, to be honest, it's hard.
It's gonna be like a police department, it's a stepping stone. You get somebody in there and they're.
But, but not only that, it's hard to justify, because pay for a full-time department in this town, this is not a lot.
No.
Going on, right?
But you gotta look at the cost. You gotta look at the cost. We, you know, if you go to a contract, I guarantee people's, you know, people's fire insurance, homeowners insurance are gonna skyrocket, because you don't need the, you know, you don't need the response time. We're pretty lucky in this town the way it is now. But, you know, unless, we have an influx of people who want to help out, I don't see a change.
Right, there's, there's no good answer.
Do we currently work with Newmarket to answer calls, or are they secondary?
Newmarket's secondary. I mean, we, we have future impacts with every town, but you can't rely on another town to make all your calls.
Right.
Every single one will cover, cover the call, but if it becomes a habit, then it's, yeah. It would, it'd be pretty expensive to contract a town, a town of extra, you know, Newmarket. Newmarket probably wouldn't be one of you consider, because they're small, they only have two full-time guys on them.
Right.
They're very busy. You know, if you contract, you contract for an extra. And, you know, I would guess that'd be a couple hundred, a couple, $300,000 a year.
Really?
But you're not gonna get, the department's not gonna get any better unless you take any, any combination of this and put it into play.
I'm not saying that's gonna make it better either. I don't know, you know?
But it's a good, it is.
But at least to get some of the guys here, that, you know.
It's kind of tokenism, but it's also about a company.
There's differences. We've got a couple of young, young members in this town, I'm not gonna mention names, that are, that are full-time guys, but you know how young folk is nowadays, they're different. If it's after 9:30 at night, if you're not going to party, they're not getting out there. You know? We get it all the time. I went to a call last night, Laura was tired, so what? So is I. You know, I'm 59 years old, I was tired too. So, you know, maybe some on-call stats, you know, maybe some compensation might change that. I know it wouldn't have for the original, because they've been talking about for years, and they said it's not gonna be any different. We can pay them off. But I'm just reaching out. We're not the only department, you know?
What is your gut saying about how this is going to resolve?
My gut said it's not gonna resolve.
That's what my gut tells me, too.
It's gonna be an ongoing thing for, for years, you know, and. I think it's something to stop looking at, but I don't think it's, I don't think there's any good answer to it right now. We just stopped hiring, recruiting people to cover the town. It's not only, it's, you know, it's not only that cost, it's the cost of administering and trying to organize it. You know, I'm not saying I wouldn't do it, but my $250 a year, a point cover, all that, you know?
Understood.
I wish I had an answer, but I don't. And, you know, if we can just get people to join, you know, put some time in.
So, let me ask straight up, given this discussion and the concerns I have, you know, what you're talking about is something on the order of a combination of the per-call pay and the on-call in-town, correct?
Correct.
So, are we talking about what, 30, 40, 50,000 dollars?
It shouldn't be that high.
Yeah, I think it'd probably be more than the, you know, to be safe, I would say $60,000, $65,000, just to be safe.
Can I ask this? So, you have the on-call in-town, 24,000 per shift and PM per person. So, is, I'm trying, what does this mean? Is this 24,000 from like?
So, if, if you had one person on-call, five days a week, this is not the weekends, five days a week for a 12-hour shift, it would be $24,000.
Okay.
Not, not the same, doesn't need the same person. It could be multiple, you know, multiple different people that could cover that completely. That'd be $24,000. Jeff, I mean, direct cost, there's gonna be administrative cost to that, you know, all the other.
All the other aspects of having employees, yes.
Yes.
Do you have an opinion on where you think we should go?
I think, my opinion, it, my first attempt would be both the pay-per-call and, and the, the, um, coverage. To try that, to see if that worked. That may not even work, you know? It may not give us any more. But it may give somebody a thought of, you know, if I'm home for the day, then...
If I'm gonna be home for the day, why don't I go?
I'm gonna sign up and, 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 you know what? To, to, to some of the older, older guys in the boundary, the ninety dollars, the twenty dollars doesn't make any difference. But to some of the younger folk, it makes a difference.
Yeah, yep.
But if you just have one person on-call, what is the, what is it that you're hoping that person will accomplish? I mean, you're gonna need...
They would go to the call, you know? I know you need more than that, but you hope you get other people to do it, but you, at least, you know...
At least you know you have one.
I would like to see two people on-call.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm telling you, I'm not gonna be able to fill that five days a week, fifty-two weeks even, not with what we got. But I'd rather have two people on-call. I can stop and looking back, you know, we have busy times, okay? And, and the worst part about it is our call isn't, our calls are all on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Uh, when they stop, it's funny, we, we go a week without a call and then we stop on a Tuesday. We'll have three calls on Tuesday, four calls on Wednesday, and five on Thursday. And then we don't see another call for four or five days. So we can't, we can't schedule a lot of emergencies. But, um, you know, I would like to see, you know, I, I would come back and battle for if I had two people sign up every day of the week for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, you know? You know, I come and speak, I don't, we're not gonna get that, I don't have that much.
That would be great for you, but...
You know, I could also work with, with, um, you know, we help Newmarket, we also work with Newmarket, you know, and say, you know, you know, if you're not, if you can't get on-call over there, then you can come on-call over here, as long as you're within a, you know, a certain area. You don't have to come over in the city or whatever, but, uh, you know, respond.
But you gotta be close.
Yeah, but, I mean, remember, our analyst comes out to Newmarket, so, um, you can get there with, you know, two or three minutes. To try to, you know, try to get there. We don't miss, you know, we miss a few calls, we're not, we're not, we're not near as, um, bad shape as, as sometimes. You know, I think over the last year, I think that we probably had seven out of two-hundred-and-seventy-something calls that we, we, we didn't have anybody respond. And that's usually targeted. But, again, instead of having six or eight people respond to a call, now we're getting two and three.
Right.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Oh, that's the lock on the floor, you can't stand.
Oh, yeah, that's big enough to stand.
I'm supposed to stand.
Yes. Conservation, conservation.
Yeah.
You're up.
Okay, uh, Keisha?
Yes, they have.
They have?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yes. It's a one-tater.
Yeah, it's a one-tater.
It's a soup.
It's just a one-tater.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, I saw that.
We're gonna have a big budget increase, a big money increase that everybody else does. Uh, you're just, hi, Dave Mason. Conservation, treasure, and, uh, I know Mike and, and York Town over there.
Oh, yeah.
You're up, go ahead.
Okay, um, basically, we're not asking for much of a budget increase, we just changed it. We're gonna get, uh, we've decided, we're not gonna expend anything into dues and subscriptions, since that hasn't really helped us in the past very much. Uh, we're gonna hold off on that. Great Bay Monitoring, we're gonna go ahead with the thousand dollars. It's zero on this, on the electronic version of this, there's a little background note. Uh, the money is going to be expended for this year, it hasn't yet.
Yep.
But it will be.
Before the end of the year?
Before the end of the year. Um, the general, so the overall general for line forty-six, one-one-oh, was, uh, four thousand, one hundred, uh, three thousand, one hundred and fifty.
No, forty-one fifty.
So that's a typo, the first, uh...
No, forty-one fifty, three thousand, one thousand, one hundred and fifty.
It's correct.
Yep.
Uh, so we spent thirty-three fifteen, and the thousand dollars will be forty-three fifteen total, small amount extra. Uh, we sometimes have properties that come up where they wanna make a deal where we'll put in a little to help them with, uh, surveying costs.
Sure.
Or, uh, whatever. Uh, so we, we've increased that this year. So the, uh, general line will go from three thousand to thirty-two fifty, um, and that's it.
Forty-two fifty for the budget?
Total, that's a two-point-four percent increase.
Okay.
Over the previous budget. And...
Any other major issues or things that you see coming down the road over the next couple of years where the conservation commission is gonna be very active?
Not extremely active, but we're, we're hoping to see some of the, uh, properties of older people, um, that may go into conservation in the future. So we're hoping for that. We also have the conservation funds, um, that we had, uh, under a separate account. So we have about eighty-eight thousand there.
Right.
So we could use some of those if necessary to back somebody up on a purchase or, uh, putting land into conservation.
Right.
So we shall see.
Okay.
Hopefully soon we'll come to it.
Okay. Questions?
No.
You got it pretty easy, Dan.
I do have a question for you. When's your next meeting? It's like, you're off schedule.
Yeah, well, always goes the third Monday of the three months.
Thanks.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Dan. Really appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, um, moving to our other, to our business. Uh, first on the list is, um, an inventory fantasy waiter. Uh, yes, I got it. It's an email. Uh, Tandie Monroe, uh, Matt McLot, one-two-fifty-two, is asking for, uh, a waiter of the fifty-dollar charge for her inventory form currently.
You know, if, if somebody takes the time to...
That's been our policy here, which is if somebody asks, we are willing to do it. So I will, I'll make a motion to approve the waiter.
Yes, I can.
Seconded by Betsy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye, great. Thank you for that. All right, uh, resident letters, um, two? Two resident letters, uh, one from Hobie Harmon, one from Mike Kessler. Um, you can read those. You know that Mike is in the audience. Um, we'll acknowledge receipt of these. And Mike, is there anything that you wanna add?
All in all, I agree.
Okay. Thank you. Um... Next, Health Trust. Uh, we received from Health, do you guys have a copy of the Health Trust? Because why are they only copy right now?
No.
Can I have any, one comment on these?
Absolutely.
I mean, I, okay, so they came up and nobody said anything. I, I understand Hobie's standpoint and yours, Mike Paul. But, um, and, and as I said to Jackie when it happened, um, I, I did worse as a select board member. So I, I can't comment. I, one tends to get emotionally involved. No, I agree, that was not proper behavior, but I, I can't, I can't say it. And I, I, um... It's an emotional issue, let's just put it that way. And, um, enough said. I, I understand where she's coming from. No, it wasn't right, but I understand where she's coming from.
And, and let me just throw out here this, so that people understand, because people have asked me about, about this. And I said, look, there is, um, there is, uh, great flexibility in terms of the state law, in terms of, uh, what selectmen can't, can't do. It's up to them to deal with that, how they had it. There is no formal process here. There's no, we call it selectmen in the state. There's, there's nothing like that. And, and so I, I wanna preempt people from trying to push this issue along those lines. That's just the way the state lies. And, um, and, you know, that's, uh, I, I just wanna make sure everyone's clear on that. Um, in terms of anything that this board has to do, there's nothing for the, the board itself to do. Um, and so it's an issue, and the people are aware of it. I appreciate the, the correspondence here. Um, certainly we'll go into the record when we do review it.
Understood.
Okay.
I almost got the resume once, uh...
Once, Betsy? Only once?
Only once.
Um, all right, Health Trust, uh, we have the package from Health Trust. We got, we just received it. Um, I would recommend that we all take this. I don't, we don't need to address this immediately. And certainly, given the conversation we had with the Dean's and Chief, it would be probably a little while for us to review this, uh, get additional information about options, and then we can address this later.
What is the purpose of us, um, reviewing it? Just because we have to prove it for...
Correct, we, we are gonna have to pick that, uh, that, our, our plan, that's gotta be done by the time. But obviously, given our earlier conversations, we don't have to make that decision now. And there may be other options that Sue and, and Chief may want us to consider. All right, so while we hold off on that, uh, we have fire, the minutes. Take a moment to a quick review.
Keisha, um, I'll get first page.
I'm sorry, time running out.
Okay, first page. Yes, second paragraph, um, it should be only the road agent in the water district had, uh, submitted a call.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Is it that long meeting?
It's a what? Long meeting?
I haven't seen it, yeah, yeah.
It was, it was a big busy meeting last time. And over here, we went into not blow it yet.
Yeah, no.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jackie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right. Um, meetings for November. So today's the twenty-sixth, last week of October. Looking at November, um, again, we have some budgets, we'll be doing, um, we'll get, be doing some more departments beginning November. I thought we had ten and a few selected dates for November now, did we? Did we, Doc?
I think I was in the minutes, I don't remember.
Okay. Um, all right, so, um...
Which is the first Tuesday in November?
It's the second.
Second.
It's next, uh, it'd be next Tuesday. No, it's next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Um...
I think you did mention that.
I thought we talked about it, and maybe we deferred until this meeting to make those dates.
Okay.
Let's just figure those dates now. Uh, we can do next Tuesday and the sixteenth. I'd like to avoid Thanksgiving week.
Yep.
Uh, so we can do the second and the sixteenth, or the ninth and the sixteenth. But I would recommend we do two, given, um, we, we have plenty of budget items. We need the departments to come in before we start rolling in the hard discussions.
I mean, I was thinking second, sixteen, thirty.
Uh, we could do that. Or do you wanna do nine, sixteen, and thirty? In other words, two weeks between now and then?
And I, I cannot promise that I would be in town the number sixteen.
Okay.
But, um, that is so much up in the air.
Okay. Um, okay, then I'll, I'll throw out, you wanna do two, nine, and thirty?
Oh, no, two, if it... All that.
It's November, I guess.
It's a question of question, Betsy.
Okay, we can do two, nine, and...
So the next two weeks, and then the thirty. In other words, we get a long break over Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I, yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's plan on eleven-two, eleven-nine, and eleven-thirty. Keisha?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then if we get, our good people have got a lot of work done, maybe we can...
Take Christmas off.
Take off Christmas.
Yes, a great time coming, yes, perhaps. Um, that is everything on the agenda. Is there other items either of you have to bring up?
I'm wondering.
Well, I was, I was gonna, oh. Helen, you guys did it?
There was nothing.
Lawrence, Mary?
I just wanted to see the face that goes with the... Mucchi, police, and a cracker.
Excellent. Well, you got it directed for it.
Hmm?
Did you see it? Were you hearing it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's fine, it's fine.
What did you think of the face there, Lawrence?
Oh, he looks like a policeman.
Oh, great. Was that a good thing or a bad thing? All right, um, if there's no other business, then I will make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Seconded by Betsy. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
So what'd you do? What do you want to report to? I saw you go out there with your sack, up behind our house, a couple weeks ago.
I don't think I did that on the road this year. I've been out looking for a period of time, but I had some good places for hickory. I used to go out to Vernon's family farm in Hickory out there, but it's not too late in the boxy guy.
Ah.
And in the woods, turkey, some squirrels, deal with the wood, weren't in there.
Oh, tell me about it.
Jack, what did your mail, what we're looking for, go to UPS or something, go to the post office?
It was delivered through UPS, and it was delivered to Halls Mill.
Oh, my God.
And my, my son is like, where's my ring?
I, I responded to it, and I had been at the post office when the UPS truck delivered something, and it went there. And my experience is, it might come in there, and they might put it on a table, and they're not gonna tell anybody.
No, they said, they did, they looked at the tracking and it had been delivered to Halls Mill, so now I'm not...
Oh, very nice of you.
How?
I'm just curious, because I responded to your, uh...
Oh, I appreciate that.
Uh, your thing, and I've had, also had experiments where something went there, and, and the initial tracking thing says it's been delivered. Huh? It's still here.
Yeah.
You know, that's just where you were at.
Yeah.
It's still here.
Yeah. And I don't know, I don't know if it's Walmart, I guess, I don't know. But I'm like, he spent his whole life on it. Why aren't you doing your job?
I want it now.
He was so patient.
I want it now.
He's been waiting for like a week, and he's ready to crack it. Sorry, he's like, why'd you write all this stuff? I was looking for something to eat.
That's why you get the big box, Betsy, that's why you get the big box. Thank you, Jackie, have a good night.
This is all off, right? Do you shut this off, Michael?
Um. Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, it's got a, it's got a stop in it.
Yeah, great, perfect, thank you.
Well, that's it, she, now, yeah, at least I've seen the floorways to have a new video system. Because I'm convinced that I do want public meetings to be recorded.
I have an archive by, by the group that does, does the feeds. So we have an archive of all of our meetings over our select board meeting.
And I must.
The first one was a little winky, we gotta fix, but now it's, and people have no problem with it now, so.
Kat, you were around when I was fighting with Dwight Schultz, correct?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. Did I act crazy?
You acted like a law. You were worried about your kids on a, a little. And I'm guessing that some toys ended up on the side of the road and maybe the kids didn't put there.
Oh, that was. And then.
Is that what, is that what part of this, what this, the letters are about?
I, you know, I, I, when I saw, yeah, when I saw the, the video of Jackie, Susan, with the other guy. Yeah, I know, she shouldn't have done that, but then I'm thinking, oh, stuff I've done, I know I shouldn't have done. And my daily, I, I threw a bad luck on the gate and stocked up all of Dwight's trucks and.
Wouldn't you have any luck?
I blocked the.
Oh.
And Mike.
Our investigation, investigation didn't let the watch out.
No, he not.
Didn't let the guard in.
He said, Betsy, would you lock the gate? And go, no, I didn't, you. Betsy, would you lock the gate? No, I don't know who didn't. He said, they give you one more try, otherwise I'm pressing you for obstructing traffic. I think that, you know?
I was expressing to somebody.
What was that song?
Mike, he was waiting, dealing with the traffic.